I'd like to call the City Council Caucus Meeting to order for March 24, 2014. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll go right to the agenda if the clerk would read item number one.
Item number one, under final consideration, an ordinance amending Chapter 192 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady relative to the sale of cigarettes.
Discussed in committee without objection...oh, roll call? Okay. Item number two.
Item number two, an ordinance amending Chapter 165 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady related to fees for the municipal golf course.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number three.
Item number three, an ordinance amending Chapter 255 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady relative to the installation of water meters.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number four.
Item number four, under original consideration, an ordinance amending the code of the City of Schenectady introduced only with the resolution calling for a public hearing regarding the affirmative action board.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim for damages to utility poll.
Discussed in the Claims Committee without objection on consent, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title of eight Jackson Place consisting of SBL 39.74-2-48.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution settling fees for the municipal golf course.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a tax surchargeary for 435-39 State Street.
Discussed in Claims without objection on consent, item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution calling for a public hearing regarding a proposed name change for a section of Norwood Avenue.
Also discussed in Claims Committee without objection on consent, item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution filing vacancies...filling vacancies on the Board of the Land Reutilization Corporation of the Capital Region.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution recognizing the achievements of women and designating March as Women's History Month.
All right, this will be taken out of order, Ms. Parrazo will present that. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution recognizing April 8, 2014 as Equal Pay Day.
Also taken out of order, Ms. Porterfield will present that. And item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution recognizing the week of April 6 as National Crime Victims' Week.
This will also be taken out of order, Mr. Riggi will present that one. And then we have several other items that came out of the Claims Committee meeting earlier this evening.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim, Liberty Mutual ASO Susan Coller.
Without objection on consent, item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim by Progressive Insurance ASO Selena Calloway.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim by Darlene Fordham.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 17.
Item number 17, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title of parcels of real property.
Again, discussed in committee without objection on consent, and item number 18.
Item number 18, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a tax surchargeary for 108 Union Street and 111 Liberty Street.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Is there anything else to come before the City Council Caucus? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Ms. Parrazo, all in favor? Aye. Okay, caucus meeting is adjourned. I will now call to order the City Council meeting and ask everyone to rise for the invocation by Reverend Horace Sanders Jr. with the Mount Olivet Missionary Baptist Church.
Let us bow our heads for prayer. Lord God of all creation, we come before you today to give you thanks and honor and praise. We thank you, Lord, because you are worthy of praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. We thank you for every good and perfect gift, for it truly does come from above. Thank you, Lord God, for this opportunity to come together tonight, as we gather here to discuss business necessary for the success of this community, for the success of this city. We ask for your hands of blessings upon this meeting. We pray, oh dear God, that you will guide us and direct us. We pray that you will assist us and bless us with wisdom, productivity, and may we have complete respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish the work that is at hand. Thank you for helping us meet every goal that is set forth in this day. We ask your complete blessings over us in Jesus' name, and together we say amen.
I'm going to ask Rowey Taylor, Executive Director of the YWCA, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk could call the roll.
Ms. Parrazo.
Chairman.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Erickson.
Here.
Mr. Kozier.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Mutavaren.
Present.
Ms. King.
Present. In November, the City Council kicked off an initiative which includes a monthly review of the economic strengths which enrich the City of Schenectady. This review includes presentations by an array of economic contributors, including locally-based corporations and industry, area business districts representing small and family-owned businesses, and other economic sectors from healthcare to service to education and nonprofits. These presentations highlight the economic impact these local businesses or organizations have on Schenectady's economy, including generated income, number of local jobs, innovation and production, along with a review of the history and future planning of the business. Tonight, the City Council is pleased to announce that we have Dr. Martha Aslan, interim President of Schenectady County Community College, on hand to present as part of this series. Schenectady County Community College was founded in 1968 and is part of the State University of New York SUNY system. The college emphasizes high-quality academic programs, broad access for students, and responsiveness to the needs of the community. SCCC offers a wide range of transfer degree, career degree, and certificate programs. Dr. Aslan is the former Vice President of Student Affairs at SCCC and was appointed to serve as Acting President on March 5, 2014. She received her master's and doctoral degrees from the University at Albany and a bachelor's from SUNY Oswego. Dr. Aslan has worked at SCCC since 1990, so please join me in welcoming Dr. Martha Aslan. Martha, it's good to have you here.
Thank you for the introduction, Dr. King. I'm honored to be here tonight to talk to you all about Schenectady County Community College and how we promote economic growth in our region. The college is an employer and a buyer of goods and services, and the living expenses of students from outside the region benefit local businesses. In addition, SCCC is a primary source of education to our local residents and a supplier of trained workers to our local industry. Next slide, please. In September 1969, Schenectady County Community College opened its doors and introduced our first class of new students. We will be celebrating 45 years of service and commitment to our community this next academic year. Our college mission, vision, and purpose remain true to our community commitment and focus on the core themes of open access to an affordable, high-caliber, and comprehensive educational experience. The community college has demonstrated adaptability and flexibility in meeting the needs of local, state, and national workforce. Next slide, please. SCCC offers 14 degree programs, 20 career degrees, and 15 certificate programs. In addition, we offer three bachelor degree programs onsite in partnership with SUNY Delhi. Those bachelor degree programs are in business technology management, criminal justice and hospitality management. We also have a joint program through the Bellinger School of Nursing for our AS degree in nursing. The college has almost 16,000 alumni and has awarded over 17,000 degrees. The average age of students taking more than 12 credit hours a semester is 24. The average age of our part-time student is 31. We strive to keep our classroom size personable, and currently, our average class size is 21 students. Our student body is diverse. Student enrollment is comprised of individuals taking credit, non-credit, and college and the high school courses. We currently serve 866 seniors from our local community, all are auditing classes on our college campus. Thirty-seven percent of our students are enrolled on a full-time basis. Twenty-one percent are part-time, and 31 percent are high school students taking college-level courses at Schenectady County Community College through our college and the high school program. About 60 percent of our students are from Schenectady, 19 percent are from Albany, 12 percent from Saratoga, and 10 percent come to us from other regions outside of our area as well as outside of the state. Next slide, please. Thank you. SCCC has its main campus located at 78 Washington Ave. in Schenectady, and has expanded our course offerings to include sites in downtown Schenectady at our Center City location, at Richmore Aviation, and at our newest location in Albany at 112 State Street. In addition to that, we continue to broaden our online distant education programs and offerings. Our newest programs demonstrate how adaptable the college is at meeting the needs of our local community. We recently introduced new programs in communications, biology, casino and gaming management, drama, honors concentration, and supply chain management. Our 2013 graduate student survey reflects 98 percent of our graduates are satisfied or very satisfied with the education that they receive at SCCC. Ninety-five percent of our alumni tell us that they achieve their educational goals by being at SCCC. Next slide, please. Thank you. Other facts about the college. SCCC offers testing-assessing secondary completion that was formerly known as the GED test. We also offer English as Second Language classes. We do this in collaboration with the Capital Region BOCES. The college, in partnership with CDTA, provides all enrolled students with a ridership program. Our students, as long as they remained enrolled, are eligible to ride any CDTA bus at any time of the...any day, any time, to any location. This partnership assists SCCC with addressing our completion agenda and further removes all transportation barriers for our students. Our students utilize the ridership program to get to and from their classes, to get to their internships, to employment, to participate in service learning opportunities, and for transportation to shopping and entertainment within our region. Over the past four years, the college's Health Professionals Opportunity Grant has provided training for 200 percent of federal poverty level or 10 of students interested in becoming a certified nurse aide, home health aide, or a personal care assistant. In addition, our SUNY College and Career Counseling Center, located on the ground floor of Center City, in the heart of downtown Schenectady, provides community-based academic and workforce development programs to adult learners in our community. Next slide, please. Unduplicated annual enrollment at Schenectady County Community College has seen much growth. Compared to 2008, 2009, we have approximately 2,000 more students. Increasingly, SCCC is becoming a first-choice college for recent high school graduates and is further attracting the returning adult learner who is seeking to develop their skillset, expand their knowledge, and begin a new career or to transfer their marketability to employers and other four-year institutions. Next slide, please. I would be remiss if I did not tell you about our Schenectady Smart Scholars Early College High School program. In 2009, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation provided grant funding for the college to open our doors to an early college high school initiative. Working in collaboration with the State University of New York, State Education Department, and Schenectady City School District, the college annually welcomes 100 to 125 new ninth-grade students into the Schenectady Smart Scholars Early College High School. The purpose of the program is to ensure access to higher learning for students that are not typical of going on to college, let alone completing high school. The early college high school engages these students in a 12-month learning community that provides comprehensive structure of support to ensure that each student will not only just graduate from high school but will have a region's diploma and will also have a minimum of 20 college credit hours earned from Schenectady County Community College. These college credit hours are transferable to any SUNY institution of higher education. This June 2014, we will be celebrating our first-ever graduating class from Schenectady Smart Scholars Early College High School program. I'm most proud to say that we have a few students who are graduating with more than 30 college credit hours from Schenectady County Community College. In addition, funding support from the state and our other local communities to include Schenectady Foundation further ensures an improved quality of life for these smart scholars enrolled in the early high school experience, as well as for their families and our community at large. Next slide, please. Thank you. SCCC truly makes a positive impact in our community. To help us better understand just how much of an impact we make, the college participated in Economic Impact Study with Economic Modeling Specialist International. In February, the results of the EMSI study were presented to the college. I am pleased to share with you examples from the study that demonstrate the significant positive impact the college has on our local community, our business community, and our investment return. The results of the study are based on 2012-2013 academic year, and they demonstrate how SCCC creates value for multiple perspectives. Next slide, please. Let us look at the impact SCCC has on our local business community from the perspective of college operations, student spending, and student productivity. SCCC and its students added $168.2 million in income to our service area economy. The college has 555 full-time and part-time employees, and payroll amounts to $18.6 million. The net impact of college payroll and expenses was approximately $24.8 million in added regional income. Next slide, please. About 4.3 percent of our students at the college are from outside the region. The expenditures of students who relocated to the region during the 2012-2013 academic year added approximately $2.6 million in income to our economy. SCCC students entered and re-entered the workforce with newly-acquired knowledge and skills. The accumulated contribution of our students currently employed in the regional workforce amounted to $140.7 million in added income during the analysis year. Next slide, please. Let us look at SCC's return on investment to students, society, and taxpayers. In 2012-13, SCCC students paid a total of $8.8 million to cover the cost of tuition, fees, books, and supplies. In return for the money they invested in their higher education, students will receive a present value of $274.2 million in increased earnings over the course of their working lives. This translates to a return of almost $7 in higher future income for every $1 that student invests in their education. Thus, the average annual return for students at SCCC is 26 percent. Next slide, please. From the social perspective, New York State will receive a present value of $586 million in added state income over the course of the student's working lifetime. Socially, the benefit to New York is $15.9 million in present-value savings related to reduced crime, lower unemployment, and increased health. From the taxpayer perspective, during the 2012-13 year, state and local taxpayers contributed $13.2 million to support Schenectady County Community College. The net present value of the added tax revenue stems from the students' higher lifetime incomes and increased output amounts to $54.9 million in benefits to taxpayers. This reflects a $4.9 million savings in benefits due to the reduced demand for New York State government-funded services. During benef...I'm sorry. Dividing benefits to taxpayers by the associated cost yields a 4.5 benefit ratio cost. This means that for every dollar in cost, there is $4.50 seen in benefits. The average annual return on investment for taxpayers is 11.2 percent. Next slide, thank you. Thus, the EMSI study reflects the value created by Schenectady County Community College. The college plays a vital role in increasing student employability and individual potential, and in return, the college creates a significant positive impact on the local business community and generates a return on investment to its major stakeholder groups, our students, society, and taxpayers. Next slide, please. In conclusion, SCCC students receive great value for their educational investment. As Table 2 on the right of the screen demonstrates, the results of the investment analysis is positive for all major stakeholders. The results of the EMSI study demonstrate that SCCC creates value from multiple perspectives. The college benefits local businesses by increasing consumer spending in the region and supplying a steady flow of qualified, trained workers in our workforce. SCCC enriches the lives of students by raising their lifetime incomes and helping them to achieve individual potential. The college benefits society as a whole in New York State by creating a more prosperous economy and generating a variety of savings through the improved lifestyles of students. Finally, SCCC benefits state and local taxpayers through increased tax receipts across the state and a reduced demand on government-supported social services. Next slide, please. I thank you for providing me this opportunity to shout about Schenectady County Community College. I think of nothing else more that I love to talk about than this institution. We do make a significant impact in our community, in the lives of our students, and in the lives of their families. Thank you very much for this time.
We really appreciate that, and definitely a valuable part of our community. All right, we will now move to out-of-order resolutions. The first one is recognizing the achievement of women and designating March as Women's History Month. So I will call in Ms. Parrazo.
Two finer representatives we cannot have, so I ask for the floor.
You have it.
Thank you. This is a resolution recognizing the achievements of women and designating March as Women's History Month, whereas women were among the first settlers of Schenectady in 1661 and since then have contributed to the growth and strength of the City of Schenectady in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life in the City of Schenectady and constituted a significant portion of the labor force working both inside and outside the home. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of both the City of Schenectady and our nation as a whole, often by providing a majority of the volunteer labor force. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social movement. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement and the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, civil rights movement, the peace movement, and other similar movements, all which have been created...have created a more fair and just society for us all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas the City of Schenectady has a rich history of women of every race, class, and ethnic background who have served to enhance the city and well-being of all its residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the Schenectady City Council, rich with women, I might add, hereby designate March as Women's History Month in the City of Schenectady and recognizes the struggles, contributions, and achievements of women in the City of Schenectady. I move the resolution.
All right, is there a second? Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. Yes, congratulations.
On behalf of the Schenectady YWCA, known also as the YWCA of Northeastern New York, I want to thank the City Council, the government of Schenectady for appreciating what women do in this community. It's obvious that we're part of...excuse me, part of the government, but we are also part of the leadership in education and having our first president of the community college. And so you also know that as much as we work forward, we also have many issues still to conquer, would be the right word, but we appreciate that the City of Schenectady City Council appreciates how much work that is and recognize us during Women's History Month. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to echo Dot's words. Dot Valkovik is the President of the Board of Directors at the YWCA, and to say thank you very much. We really appreciate this. And on behalf of the women in Schenectady, we will have this framed, and it'll hang on the wall in the YWCA.
All right, the next out-of-order resolution is one recognizing April 8, 2014 as Equal Pay Day. Ms. Porterfield. Thank you. I'd like to invite the women who are here to receive this resolution. Behind the rail, please. You have the floor. A resolution recognizing April 8, 2014 as Equal Pay Day. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women and minorities continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas families headed by a working mother make up nearly 40 percent of low-income families, and pay equity can significantly cut the poverty rates for women. And whereas, according to the National Partnership for Women and Families, the wage gap results in a total loss of income of over $20 billion for women in the state of New York, with an average wage gap of over 8,000 between men and women. And whereas the New York State Women's Equality Act and the Federal Paycheck Fairness Act would advance equal pay by closing existing loopholes in the Equal Pay Act that allow employers to fire or reprimand employees who share wage information, and by increasing damages and successful claims. And whereas, according to 2012 American Association for Women's AAUW study, college-educated women working full-time over a course of a lifetime earn about half a million dollars less than their male payers. And whereas nearly four in 10 mothers are their household's primary breadwinner, and nearly two-thirds of mothers provide significant financial support, making pay equity critical for family economic security. And whereas a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted in the Social Security or pension benefit formula. And whereas fair pay policies can be implemented by using existing salary-setting systems in both the public and private sectors. And whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April 8, symbolizes the day in 2014 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore be it resolved, April 8, 2014 be recognized as Equal Pay Day, and we call on all citizens to join the City Council and mayor in recognizing the significant contributions to their labor force made by women. Madam President, I move the resolution. All right, seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Aye. Okay.
My name is Kay Ackerman, and I'm here with Flora Romanowski from the League of Women Voters and Dot Valkovik from the YWCA to thank you for bringing this to the attention of the residents of Schenectady. It is especially important because this year in the state legislature, a bill has already been passed by the Assembly that would make pay equity equal for women as men, and we are very anxious that...very eager, I should say, that our residents have a conversation with their state senator to see that this bill passes through the state senate. So we're bringing it to everyone's attention early so that people can write letters, make phone calls, do what needs to be done to make this unjust situation as far as pay for women in New York State to get that fixed. And we thank you very much, and I...anyone else? Just be sure to call your state senator, and thank your Assemblyman if they voted for it, and I think both of the Assemblymen...I know, both of them representing Schenectady County did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our third out-of-order resolution is...
Our third out-of-order resolution is recognizing the week of April 6th as National Crime Victims' Rights Week. Mr. Riggi.
Madam President, may I read the resolution?
You have the floor.
Thank you. It's a resolution recognizing the week of April 6th as National Crime Victims' Rights Week. Whereas 18.7 million Americans are directly harmed by crime each year, and each crime affects many more family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers by leaving a lasting physical, emotional, or financial impact on people of all ages and abilities and of all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. And whereas in 1982, the president's task force on victims of crime envisioned a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims to mitigate the degree to which crime victims face a criminal justice system that at times ignores their rights and treats them with disrespect. And whereas the victim assistance community faces new challenges to reach and serve all victims, including victims of new crimes such as cybercrime and terrorism, and victims who have not always trusted the criminal justice system, including immigrant victims, urban youth, and victims who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or questioning. And whereas National Crime Victims' Rights Week, April 6th through 12th, 2014, provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment that launched the victims' rights movement, inspires its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Schenectady City Council hereby joins Gary R. McCarthy, mayor of the city of Schenectady, in proclaiming the week of April 6th through 12th, 2014, to be National Crime Victims' Rights Week and reaffirms Schenectady's commitment to respecting and enforcing victims' rights and addressing their needs throughout the year. Madam President, I move this resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Mutavaren. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much to the Schenectady City Council for this resolution. It means a lot that our own city does recognize Crime Victims' Rights Week. We have so many victims in the city, in the county, in the nation, and it is very good that we do recognize them and their families. I also want to say that my daughter, Mary Regina, went to Schenectady County Community College, and it just so happened it was wonderful to hear about all that they're doing there. So I will pass this on to my co-conspirators here.
I just wanted to say thank you. I was just thinking about how many years that I've been with the POMC group, Parents Murdered Children group, and this is like 19 years now that we've been doing an event in Schenectady's Central Park Rose Garden, and you have been there every step of the way for us, and I can't thank you enough. There are events being planned throughout that week in each county, and Schenectady is going to host their event on Wednesday, April 9th, at noon in the Rose Garden. Hopefully the weather will, well, hopefully it won't be this cold, or we'll be in the pavilion if it's not, if the weather doesn't hold up. But I want to invite everybody to be there. The families really do appreciate all of the support. Thank you.
I'd like to thank also the Schenectady City Council. I'm not a resident of Schenectady County, however, my daughter was murdered in Schenectady County 10 years ago, October 1st. I live in Rensselaer County, but it is very, very important for Crime Victims' Rights Week to take place so that the family members, the survivors, can come together and know that there is support out there for all of us. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have no public hearings tonight, so I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March 10th, 2014. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Ms. Parrazo. All in favor? Aye. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the city council for Monday, March 24th, 2014. Under official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated March 24th, 2014. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Do we have any council committee reports? Mr. Riggi.
Before claims, and this has been ongoing, and we actually held up until tonight paying a couple of these claims for vehicular property damage accidents, and it's been an ongoing problem. As a matter of fact, tonight on the agenda, there's four accidents, property damage accidents totaling over $10,000. This has been ongoing, and myself and the rest of the council has some real concerns about how we're going to deal with this and what's being done to deal with this, because the numbers are kind of extraordinary, actually, only since I've been chair of claims since 2013 through today. In 2013, we had a total of 17 property claims due to accidents with city vehicles, and they totaled 44,500. And the breakdown is one in the fire department, three for the police department, four for the street department, Bureau of Services, and nine in the waste department. In 2014, this is only three months, we have seven accidents, and they're totaling $24,000 to this point. It's only the first quarter of this year. One in the fire department, one in the police department, one Bureau of Services Street Department, four in the waste department. It seems like the waste department seems to have the biggest problem. From what I'm seeing so far, we have a total of 24 accidents, and 13 of them are directly caused by the waste department. Now, some of us feel that one of the reasons is because there's a clause in our contract called the point system where as soon as they're done with their routes, they may go home. Apparently, this is not a good thing, because I think by the rushing, it leads to carelessness. Many of these involve stationary objects, and the reason we have a $50,000 deductible is because an insurance company doesn't want to carry us anymore. So the taxpayers are the insurance company, and we're the claims rep. That's the way I look at this. So we have to look out for the best interests of the city, and we're not quite sure what plans have been put in place, supervisory or what's going on, are there safety classes? But Mayor, we're going to have to start, I think, looking into this a little further than we are than just paying the claims. We have to pay the claims. We're liable, there's no question about that, the people that have been injured by the city. And on top of that, this is not including if there's any personal injuries for nonstationary objects and the damage to city vehicles that we have to approve also when we buy these city vehicles. Are they being fixed? I don't know. But in the future, I would like to see at least an estimate of when there's a claim put in, what is the damage done to a city vehicle, whether it's going to be fixed or not. I'd like to know how much that is costing us and the taxpayer, because it decreases the value of that vehicle when the vehicle has to be turned in either to lease or sold if we bought it. So this is ongoing. There's obviously some problems going on here, and it's very disconcerting to me and obviously to members of the council. We've been asking these questions, and we were going to hold off on paying a couple of them, and then I think we decided that it really isn't fair for the people that have been part of this process and injured, their property being damaged, to hold them off anymore. But we need to see whatever the issues are as far as the safety, if there's a safety program, driver's program, drug testing, we'd like to see that. We'd like to see what's being done, because it's getting, it seems to be getting a little out of hand, and we really can't afford to just keep paying this off. And it's just, I think, by a miracle, there hasn't been a real tragedy. We had one driver flew out of his truck in one of these accidents, driving by himself, flew out of a truck. Now, there's only a couple ways that can happen, and I wasn't there, so I can't tell you what it is, but that's not good. It's a good thing he wasn't killed, or some innocent person wasn't killed, it was just property damage or landscaping. But we can't have this anymore, there's no question about it. So Mayor, I'm asking you to look into this. Let us know what can be done and what is being done. If something's being done, all that can be done is being done. Well, I don't think some of these people should be driving anymore, because the same names keep coming up over and over and over again. An insurance company would not insure these people, there's no question about it. If it was somebody in your own household, you would pull the keys away from them. So I think this has to be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? If not, we'll move on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have two people who signed up to speak. The first is Jason Plank.
Madam President, city council, mayor. One of the things is, one of the city council members last week, two weeks ago on the affirmative action, spoke out of turn, basically had said that I didn't have my facts straight. That's recently I gave you a copy of America Juicy's resume and a copy of her application to the city thing. Also too is what I didn't have were the copies of the Community Development Block Grant. I mean, they're 20 to 40 pages. It shows in there where she cut and pasted. And Madam President, you were here when Councilman Blanchard and Councilman Allen, at the time, told her to stop cutting and pasting those applications. The other piece is, is that we also noticed within the Community Development Block Grant, she's turned around and charged back to the city for affirmative action, saying that she sat on the committee to find a new executive director at the Hamilton Hill Art Center. What does that have to do with the city's affirmative action? It had nothing. Both Councilman Blanchard and Councilman Joe said that that needed to stop. That's also falsifying federal documents, because the reason why is because we give money to Hamilton Hill under the Community Development Block Grant. It looks like that we were setting this place up to give our own money back to ourselves. So, you know, I mean, these are some of the things that we need to take a look at. Also too is that in just released from the Department of Justice after about 14 years, a claim in 1999 and in 2002, the Department of Justice went after the New York City Fire Department and sued him for $98 million in fines for affirmative action violations of not hiring qualified minorities. And they turned around and had to set up, reprioritize, basically saying, no white people are able to hire here at this point in time. And they turned around and had to have higher priorities, which means they had to go back in and retake the test, and then, of course, the police chief and the fire department had to go back in and re-interview them and go through them. They're just not because they're a minority, they were hired. They were hired because they were qualified applicants, and they had to be able to put them on. They did it for priority in July of 2013, January 2014, and July 2014. So, you know, basically, this city can be on the hook, and it took 15 years for the minority group to get justice against New York City. How long is it going to take for here in the city and in the county for its violations? How much money are we going to get hit with fines? Because we have the same thing that New York City had, you know, and hopefully in two weeks, three weeks, we will have the public hearing on affirmative action. Hopefully, people will come out. Here's the Department of Justice.
Thank you. Thank you. Mary McLean.
My name is Mary McLean. I live in the city. Two items tonight. Item number three on tonight's agenda calls for the installation of water meters for business properties. At the committee meeting on March 17th, council member Erickson proposed installing water meters in our homes. Council members liked his suggestion. I have a big problem with water meters in our homes. Residential meters will be the end of the island gardens. Those of us who plant the gardens use the outside faucets attached to our homes to water the plants. There is no city source to water them. With summers like the one we had last year, it takes a lot of water to keep the plants alive. I do not mind the work, but I am not willing to absorb the cost for timed water use. Residential meters are a bad idea. Let the idea die in committee where it got started. Affirmative action, surely council is bluffing on this one. The proposal as written is discriminatory. It's like listening to someone select doughnuts at a pastry shop, two of these, three of these, some of these, and ignore the rest. I agree with Ms. Kadeus when she said affirmative action applies to everyone, and if council was serious about affirmative action, they would have used the method to fill the vacant city council seat. The seat comes with a salary and medical coverage. Why wasn't it filled by someone who did not have a job? Two weeks ago, the seat was given to a double-dipper. 14 days later, council comes back with an affirmative action proposal. Council isn't serious. It had a golden opportunity to apply it, and members blew it. The proof is right there in that seat. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak on the legislative agenda, so I'm going to declare that portion of the meeting closed. I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Okay, Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren. All in favor? Aye. Right, and we have one roll call item.
An ordinance amending Chapter 192 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady relative to the sale of cigarettes.
I will entertain a motion to put this on the agenda. Okay, Mr. Kozier, seconded by Ms. Parrazo. All in favor? Aye. All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parrazo.
Aye.
Ms. Porterfield.
Aye.
Mr. Erickson.
Aye.
Mr. Kozier.
Aye.
Mr. Riggi.
Just quickly to explain my vote on this, I'm certainly not opposed to cigarette selling. I'd like to see it banished all over, not just Lucy's, if I had my way. I lost two sisters to cancer and directly due to cigarette smoking. It has nothing to do with this. I support the Tax Free Coalition, Smoking Coalition. I march with them on Crane Street. What goes on in the bidet goes is absolutely terrible. Just the advertising of cigarettes, not Lucy's, just the advertising of cigarettes out front where kids can see it. It's terrible. My problem with this is really, it just has to do with another ordinance that's going to be on our books, that we have so many now that we're throwing the ball around who's going to enforce, throwing snow in the street, who's going to, the police department says it's the Bureau of Service should do it, the Bureau of Service, then it's code enforcement should do it. Right now, we're going to have code enforcement and the police, I guess, doing this. We have a county agency that should be doing this. It's illegal. It's federal and state, it's illegal to do this. Why we're going to have, I just see it as redundancy and just another law that, you know, isn't enforceable. It could be, but it's enforceable by other entities too. I turned in somebody for selling Lucy's last week to the county health department. That's who I turned it into, and they took the complaint, and they said they would act on it. So I'm not sure, but with that, I'm going to vote no, because we have enough ordinances on this, on our books right now that are not enforceable. And that's my, I want to see ordinances that we can enforce, not that we can't enforce or don't enforce and choose to throw the ball around. So that's nothing to do with selling to minors at all. I'm strictly against that. I don't want anybody to get the wrong message, but I have a problem with having redundancy, and I was just, every time I hear it, I hear "working together works." Why aren't we working together and working on this one? I don't know. So that's my vote. Thank you.
Mr. Mutavaren?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Passes six to one.
Okay. We'll now move on to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have 10 people signed up to speak. The first is Joe Rodriguez.
Good evening. Like I said, I'll be here every week, excuse me, every meeting concerning Moisten Street, but one of the most...
Good evening. Like I said, I'll be here every week, excuse me, every meeting concerning Moore Street. But one of the most important things is that the traffic safety in the city, besides the traffic safety, if you look on the corner of Duane and Brandywine, for the last couple of weeks, we see some furnishing or whatever right on the corner. What I can't understand is how the sanitation department rides past there collecting trash and that's still there. I mean, I'm pretty sure where we rise by is on the corner of Duane, coming from the western part of Duane and to Brandywine, making a right to us going to Stewart's. But in that section of Brandywine and Albany Street on February 27th, he's a relative of mine, was struck and injured seriously, taken to Albany Med. On Friday, the 28th, we had to remove, you know, the, he passed away from his injuries. The concern is the safety on that corner. Why is it that when people are getting injured, I think I talked to you about this, I think she's here for that stuff.
And that's what I'm here for. If I can say a word. This Albany Street in Brandywine has become very hazardous, okay? My son was 47 years old, he was coming across the street, he was hit and he was killed, okay? And I believe that if we could put up some cross signals where all the traffic has to stop, so people can go across that street, it would alleviate a lot of this problem. 2009, I was hit coming across that street and I'm thankful. I thank God I was not hurt, okay? But my son was killed, okay? I know the young lady, she said she was in Texas and whatnot, okay? But that's not the point. The point is, my son is gone. And I believe that if we don't do something to alleviate this problem, that somebody else is going to get hurt. And I talked to Joe, I knew, sorry, I believe his name is, and he said that there were budgets, budgets, budgets. Listen, I'm a taxpayer. I pay my taxes. Something needs to be done because I hate to see somebody else's child being killed. And that's what I'm here for. I believe that something could be done with this. If you have the heart, open up your heart and let something be done because I don't want this to happen to somebody else. And I thank you.
And just one more thing. I'm pretty sure you drive past State Street, if you can't see them cars parked on the curb, on the curb blocking the passageway for pedestrians, then something's wrong. I can't see how the police department drives by and don't see them cars parked on the curb.
Thank you. Kathy Lewis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, and members of the council. On behalf of the Schenectady City School District Board of Education, I want to remind everyone to vote tomorrow for the Capitol Project referendum. It's, the voting is taking place from 12 to 9 at seven locations in the city. This is a Capitol Project referendum, as I said, for $70 million and it is estimated that it will cost you zero to the grand sum of $1.14 for a house assessed at $100,000. This is due to the fact that we have structured the work, that 95% of it is paid for by the state and the other 5% is covered by what is called an Excel grant. So, we urge everyone to go out and vote for it. Now, what's going to be done in this Capitol project? Primarily, we're working on our middle schools. We will put $25 million into Mount Pleasant, another $22 million into Oneida, and a $3.6 million into Central Park. I know there's been some concern about Central Park. We are not undoing the work that's been done there before. We're raising a few, the height of a few toilets and the height of a few drinking fountains in that school in addition to other work that was needed. You may recall that in the city, our schools are rather old. Eight of them are over 100 years old and we need this capital money in order to do the necessary work. Oftentimes, that involves the furnaces, the roofs, and so on. In this case, we're adding a few classrooms at Howe and we're doing, creating these small learning centers at Mount Pleasant and at Oneida with the idea that we will reopen Oneida in 2016 at the same time that we close Elmer School. Elmer School is 105 years old and it is really beyond repair. It's not, it would be putting good money after bad or bad money after good, whatever way it goes. But that, so this is part of the reason we're looking at doing this work. So, once again, vote tomorrow, March 25th, 12 to 9. The seven locations are Yates Elementary, Schenectady High School, Elmer Elementary, Page Elementary, Woodlawn Elementary, Mount Pleasant Middle School, and Fulton Early Childhood Center. And it depends on your district, your city district, it determines at which location you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council Mayor. In about two weeks, we should get back the results of what our Community Development Block Grants will be. It happens every first of the year and then, of course, with public hearings on the CBG. We still have not gotten a straight answer out of the Community Development Block Grant people on exactly where the, about $60,000 of the payback on this $3 million loan that we received from HUD, is it coming out of the out-of-house money, which is the 15%, or is it coming out of the back-of-the-house money? If it's coming out of the front-of-the-house money, that's going to be looking at about a 20% across-the-board cut in the money itself. And also too is, we should also need to know exactly where, you know, how this money is going to be paid back, but also, what are we actually going to do? Last week, we had a meeting, was presented before this board on the land bank and they're trying to concentrate along Eastern Parkway. That's not where we need to be concentrating at. The only reason why we're concentrating over there is because the developers and the contractors and Metroplex is going in that direction. Our problems are Hamilton Hill and Mount Pleasant. We have between a 40 to 45% homeownership rate in those two communities. We're only as strong as our weakest link and we need to be able to move forward in providing homeownership. If we increase homeownership, HUD says that if we get to 60%, we have a stabilized neighborhood. What's that going to do? It's going to lower the crime, it's going to lower health costs, it's going to lower everything. We need to start working in these two neighborhoods and you're not. We have, we have the tools. The mayor was correct on some of these, of tearing down some of these houses and creating parking lots to give some off-street parking. That was a great idea. We've been saying that for many, many years and I'm glad that he was behind us on supporting that. That was a great saying. But we need to start working where our weakest link is and helping those to increase their property values and to increase their ability to get jobs. And that's the whole thing is right now, you know, you're concentrating everywhere else except where we need to be at. And we need to be able to know exactly how we're going to be able to move forward because all these documents are just saying they're not there. Well, they've got to be there, so we've got to know what direction. Also, in April is Fair Housing Month. The Gazette just did a nice little article showing that Schenectady County is the worst county in the state in affordable housing and in affordable rents. So, we need to be able to take a look at some of the things that are going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tony Benal.
Tony Benal, Bellevue. I haven't had the chance up until this past weekend to come down from Bellevue right straight up Broadway to State Street. What a shock I got this weekend. The building on the corner of State and Broadway, the radio station, who in God's name ever told them they could paint that? I mean, I'm waiting for the red light there and I look up State Street, all those beautiful buildings, we worry about facades, we worry about this, we worry about that. To me, that is an eyesore, this city. I don't know how they got to paint it, but I mean, you're trying to beautify downtown? That is an eyesore. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Smith.
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy, President King, and City Council members. My name is Patricia Smith and I am Vice President of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association. The first annual Mount Pleasant Sports Awareness Event was held this past Saturday. Seven sports organizations participated and approximately 45 youth applied for or signed up, excuse me, for league or club activities. Our thanks to Ed Kosher, Plains Bike and Ski Shop for brand-new bicycle helmets and to Donna Foley for the new basketball store prizes. The kids were thrilled. At 7:00 PM Thursday, April 10th, Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association will host a neighborhood revitalization meeting at the Faith Deliverance Tabernacle Church, 1028 Ostrander Place. Guest speakers will be Eric Schilling, Building Inspector, City of Schenectady, and Bob Hoffman, legislator, District 1, and Chair of the Schenectady County Neighborhood Revitalization Committee. The neighborhood church-to-church crosswalk will begin on Good Friday, April 18th at 10:00 AM from New Day Christian Empowerment Center, corner of Vermont Ave. at 1259 Chrysler Ave. Six churches will be participating. Everyone is welcome to join the walk, which will conclude at the Bridge Christian Church, 735 Crane Street for a theatrical performance and refreshments. Mount Pleasant Parks and Sidewalk Cleanup Day is scheduled for Saturday, May 3rd from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. 8:30 meeting and orientation site will be announced. Volunteers will pick up their supplies, wear work clothes, enclosed toed shoes. We will also be collecting recyclable bottles and cans to benefit the Emily A. Wiley Foundation, which serves our community. On Thursday, May 8th at 7:00 PM, Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association will host a Community Emergency Preparedness Night with guest speakers from Schenectady County Public Health Services, Lisa Whitman, who's RN BSN Public Health Nurse Preparedness Program, and June Schultz, RN BSN Public Health Nurse Medical Reserve Corps Coordinator. We have also asked Councilman John Mutavaren to announce additional Mount Pleasant events. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for all the good work you're doing. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. We've got two problems that I know of. Number one, these cars are double parking, you know, waiting for somebody, you know, cars are trying to get through, go down the street, up the street. That's got to stop. Number two thing is the seniors are taken advantage of in this town and it's not right. These contractors or whoever they are coming around dumping blacktop on the driveway and on the sidewalk, it's not right. And they do it without the owner's permission. They need to be fined and locked up. I want them locked up before they do anything else. This is not right. And charging them too. I mean, this has got to stop before any other senior system has the same problem. We don't need that kind of thing going on. That's it.
Thank you. Anita Cody?
No, see, I, you know, I just, that's all I can say, you know? It really hurts and I really would like to have that done up there because, you know, I would hate for somebody else to go through this. He was already disabled, okay? When you're disabled, you can't walk as fast, okay? And he was coming across the street minding his own business at 10 o'clock at night. He shouldn't have probably even been out because I tried to keep him in the house that night because he is disabled, he walks slow. But somebody else is going, this is going to hap, listen, there's been accidents up there on that corner, okay? Even the police department, the police department had an accident on that corner. The traffic is horrendous. I mean, they just run through the red lights and everything. Something needs to be done and I'm telling you, if it's not done, I'll have to take it someplace else. I don't want to sue this young lady that killed my son. I really don't. But if I have to, in order to fight this, I will because it's got to be done. There's got to be money in a budget somewhere, okay? I mean, I've heard this young lady talk about how much money that they have made, okay? There's got to be it somewhere and I would really appreciate it that you would find it in your heart to find it. Thank you.
Thank you. Flora Romanowski.
Good evening. I'm Flora Romanowski from the City of Schenectady. I came tonight to make the public aware of the ongoing activities taking place in Mount Pleasant Neighborhood. For a long, long time, Mount Pleasant has been woefully neglected and not even the millions of dollars grant money that Hillary Clinton in 2004 had earmarked for Mount Pleasant and Hamilton Hill didn't make a difference because it's to my understanding, went elsewhere. The shining example has been Sharon Lynn Smith. She's the president of Mount Pleasant Neighborhood and her assistants, Donna Foley, John Horton, and Patty Smith. For well over two years and almost on a daily basis, not for photo shots or competing with other neighborhoods, we have dire needs. For over two years, almost every single day, Sharon Lynn Smith has taken the bull by the horn, so to speak, and walked the walk diligently, attending to concerns and solutions to better improve the conditions on Mount Pleasant Neighborhood. Sharon Lynn, along with her assistants, have met with every city official, made presentations to the city and county councils, many organizations in the city, brought the business managers together, attended every religious association, talked with the congregations and the religious leaders, talked with residents on the streets. She walks up and down the streets asking their opinions. She's been in contact with the news media, took pictures of all the area houses that needed fixing up and she presented it to the city council, the legislative council, and we met before the code enforcers and it saved them, alleviated many hours of work for them. And she works with a team and for all of you who know Sharon, she's just a wonderful, even-spirited person, not like me at times. She got everybody to paint every single fire hydrant, you heard about that, encouraged weeding, re-treating, planting of flowers and other plants, fields around Mount Pleasant, cleaned up the city playgrounds and Orchard Park, which I found out just several years ago, I didn't even know where it was. She got volunteers to clear away over eight dumpsters of debris. Parks and around, and John Horton does the city trees, he cuts them and trims them, clears away brushes around the city parks and CVS. And I better hurry up because my time is going out, just to name a few of the things she does. This past Saturday, Sharon Lynn and Reverend James of the Bridge Church put on a magnificent sports thing for the children and Channel 10, thank you, Channel 10, came and reported and they, last night, they stated it was almost 50 children signed up. So Sharon Lynn and her crew can be seen being active involved. But I also would like to say thank you, can I just say thank you to, quickly, to some of the newer city council members who really take seriously that they're at-large people. Vince Riggi, thank you so much. Lisa Perazzo, thank you so much. And I know the two of you would be much more involved, but Mount Pleasant and Bellevue, we had the same evening of our meeting, so. And special, special thanks to Marion Porterfield, who continuously works, besides all the work she does on the side, she continuously works with Sharon Lynn on Mount Pleasant and the two of them are quite a team. Thank you.
Thank you. Mohammed Haifaz.
Hi, my name is Mohammed Haifaz and I'm a little upset with Flora here because I started the Mount Pleasant a couple of years ago, Neighborhood Association. But regardless, I am, I belong now to SLIC, I'm more active with that. Well, let me start. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I'm here to speak about the city proposal to fix the water ladders for Schenectady homeowners when they break. Well, some people said that this is one of the best ideas that has recently come out of City Hall. I spoke to a number of landlords and they have all agreed that this is a good idea, but the city has to work out the details of implementing this proposal. The way we see it, it's like an insurance policy for that water or sewer lines. I know Mr. Mutavaren mentioned sewer, we didn't see that mentioned anywhere. The homeowner will pay for a premium to the city and in turn, the city will promise us to fix the lines when they break. Some owners have expressed concern, especially if the city tries to make an absolute requirement to participate rather than being an optional program. Others are concerned that the city may refuse to do the work. Others are concerned that the city may refuse to do the work if the property owner is not current with paying his or her property taxes. Some landlords have indicated that the city may also try to collect from their insurance companies if their policy covers their placement cost of those lines. This would appear as a claim filed against the landlord. However, I would say that this is, that very few insurance companies cover this expense for landlords' policy. I'm in the insurance business. And it's a wise investment to participate in this program offered by the city, especially if the landlord has not recently replaced their water lines. Moreover, if landlords do not have the money to fix those lines when they break, they will likely, they will more likely abandon those properties as their tenants will be forced to leave, and the final result is more blight for the city. In short, this program should be about what's good for the property owners and residents of the city of Schenectady, not about some plumbers greatly benefiting from someone else's problems. I also encourage City Council member to attend our next landlord meeting to further discuss this proposal and the concern that reservation landlords may have about the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary McLean. Okay. Then I have no one else signed up to speak on the privilege of the floor. I'm going to declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Erickson.
Just a couple of things I wanted to talk about tonight. One, Mary McLean talked about the water meters and how it was brought up in committee, and as a lot of ideas are tossed around, that was one that came up. My specific opinion, or I guess comment on it, at least to bring up for discussion, was to make water meters an option, right? So people can choose from the current flat rate or choose to have a meter if they feel that they would benefit one way or another. And whether that works out in terms of revenue and dividing the costs up amongst residents, you know, is yet to be determined whether you dig into it or not. But I thought it would be an option for some residents who maybe is a single person living in a house, uses much less water than a family of four or five people, and so if they felt the meter was in their best interest, it would be an option. So that's the only thought I had on that. Again, we had some people coming up talking very seriously about traffic safety. Last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, I talked about safety and cars running stop signs, stoplights, speeding through the neighborhoods, and I talked to the Traffic Patrol Division. They indicated they have several officers who spend all day, you know, looking for speeders and stop signs and people breaking the traffic laws, you know, as much as they are doing, and I think it's about quite a bit of money in terms of revenue that we do pull in by issuing tickets. You know, it's something, we spend a lot of money on public safety. I think we should consider maybe allocating some more of those resources that we're currently paying for public safety towards traffic safety because I think it's something that affects everyone's lives, the good, the bad. Everyone who lives and resides and walks around and spends time in the city is impacted by the traffic and the safety that's involved there. So we should take a look at reallocating some resources. And lastly, comments about the water laterals. We brought this up, the lateral program, oh, a bunch of times, and I'm sure we'll talk about it a bunch more. You know, the only thing I've come to conclude is that anybody who's recently fixed their water lateral is not going to like the program. Anyone whose water lateral is about to break, they're going to love the program, and anybody, everybody in between might, you know, not be so passionate about an opinion. This is going to be a tough one. I'm not sure, it seems like every time we bring it up, there's at least four, five, six, or seven different opinions on how it should be implemented. And, you know, Carl Olson and Carl LaFond have presented it a bunch of different ways, wondering, well, do you guys like this way? And, well, we're not sure. So he's presented it a different way, and so they've been, I think, more than patient in accommodating and trying to present it a hundred different ways, hoping to find one that's palatable by the majority of us. And if it's something that we're going to do, we're going to have to find some compromise. And I think that this is something that, if we do decide to do it, not everyone's going to be happy with it. So we're going to get complaints regardless of what outcome we have. So that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perazzo.
Hi, just a couple of announcements and recognitions. There is a financial health and debt elimination drop-in session that is hosted by a thousand Moms of Schenectady on Monday, March thirty-first, from six PM to seven-thirty, and that is going to be at the Central Schenectady Library in the McCesney Room. And it includes free eBooks to attendees, How Money Works, which is a common sense guide to financial health, and How Money Works for Kids, which is a parent's guide. So again, that's Monday, March thirty-first, six to seven-thirty PM in the McCesney Room in the downtown library. I also just want to recognize a couple of really substantial investments in our city that are going to be coming down the pike. One is the old MVP Building on Liberty Street. That's recently been purchased, and it's going to be receiving a three-point-six-million-dollar private investment from the Louisi Brother Contracting and also Savarino Minucci, along with some funding from Metroplex, and it's going to end up being thirty upscale apartments. So I think it's just a wonderful continuation of the economic growth and development as it travels down State Street and starts to move off into the various neighborhoods. I also want to say congratulations to Niskian Glass, which is actually a business in the City of Schenectady that recently purchased a substantial piece of equipment that will allow them to really increase their services to the people that utilize their business, and just another good investment in the city. And lastly, just reminding people again that the graffiti covering initiative, Give Graffiti the Brush, will be starting up as soon as Mother Nature cooperates. We need to have a good, solid fifty-degree day throughout the day and the night for the paint to dry and cure properly. So if you have a business or a home in the City of Schenectady that has unfortunately been tagged with graffiti, please contact me. My information is on the city website. We'll send you a release form, and we will have our youth come out and, very professionally, cover your graffiti for you. So that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. We did have a speaker that came to talk again about the affirmative action, and yes, we are moving forward with the Affirmative Action Advisory Board. I just wanted to make it clear that there are specific, there are specific groups that need to be represented according to the legislation, women, minorities, veterans, disabled. But in addition to that, there are at-large seats for anyone who is interested in moving forward in terms of making sure that we have affirmative action. So it's not just those groups, there's also other at-large seats, so that others can have the opportunity to sit on that board if they're so interested, and we are still accepting resumes for that. I want to remind folks that we're still in tax season. We have about twenty-one more days before taxes are due, and free tax preparation is still available at the Vita sites, Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, excuse me, where Ellis, at SCAP, also Rotterdam Senior Citizen Center. Based on where you live, you can call, get an appointment, and simply dial two-one-one and tell them where you live and what your needs are, and they can help you to make an appointment to have your taxes prepared. I just also would like to announce that, well, spring has sprung, even though it may not feel like it. April twenty-second is Earth Day, and the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association will be doing a cleanup starting at Jerry Burrell Park, beginning at eight-thirty AM to noon. It's so please join us in celebrating Earth Day. We're going to be cleaning up the neighborhood in the park, and the work projects and plans include picking up litter, raking, pruning trees, cleaning and painting over graffiti, and overall sprucing up the park and the neighborhood for spring. The organizations that are supporting this are the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association, Better Neighborhoods Incorporated, the City of Schenectady Parks Department, General Electric, Habitat for Humanity, and Retreat Schenectady. So we invite folks that are interested in supporting this and also that live around the neighborhood to come out, let's work together and, you know, clean up for spring. And we don't have a date yet, but we are planning also a shredding day, so we'll get some help, some recycling going as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to read this for Jackie Hurd and Julie Lewis with the Bellevue Group. Bellevue Preservation Meeting, Thursday, April tenth, seven PM at St. Paul's Episcopal Church. Speaker to be announced, so they're looking for a speaker. Any takers? The public is invited. And also, just a heads up, the Bellevue Neighborhood Wide Garage Sale will be held on Saturday, June seventh. Applications will be available soon. Bellevue Farmer's Market will open Thursday, June twelfth, at four PM and be held every Thursday through September fifth. That wound up to be very successful. I'm glad to see they're going to be up and running again. And my hat's off to all the neighborhood associations throughout the city. They do a great job, you know, in taking care of their neighborhoods, and it's good to see so many people involved, it really is good. And just to expand a little on Mr. Erickson's comments about the lateral program, I agree. Everyone's not going to be happy with this. But one thing we have to be clear on, just so people don't get the wrong idea, it's going to be half of a water system, only from the city's main to the curb box. From there into the house is still going to be the homeowner's responsibility, no matter what. So, you know, there's a lot of things to be considered, and we have to get facts and figures, what it's going to cost, and see if this is going to go forward or not. But there's a lot of gray area with this, because anybody that's going to replace a water system, if you only replace half, guess what? The other half isn't far behind, so you're going to have to hire a plumber anyhow. So anyhow, that's my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Motivaren.
Thank you. Just a few announcements. The Schenectady Landlord Association, their next meeting is Wednesday, April the second, six-thirty PM at the Trinity Lutheran Church at thirty-five Foreman Street. April twenty-sixth is Schenectady Inner City Mission Cleanup Day. Volunteers are needed. Meet at the Faith United Metalist Church, corner of Eastern and Brandywine Avenue, at eight-thirty AM to depart at nine AM. Schenectady Little League is seeking volunteer to help with cleanup day and fence painting at Michigan Avenue on April the twelfth, thirteenth, seventeenth, and the nineteenth. Also, the Schenectady Retreat will be planting trees sometime around Arbor Day in April. They are looking for volunteers, and they're also, if you're interested in trees, please contact Retreat. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kosher.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few more announcements as well regarding the smoking piece. I was in contact with Andy Sofita, the Public Health Director, earlier today, and he had indicated to me that both the city and the county will be and should be working collaboratively as a partnership when we do these stings or whatever we want to call them with the Lucy's. It's very important, because as I mentioned at the committee meeting, every one of these businesses are cited with a fine the first time, then the second piece, when they come up for the second time that they're caught, there's an additional fine. Then it gets to the point where they're actually going to lose their liquor license, the ability to sell liquor, and then finally, the fourth indictment would be when they lose their ability to sell lottery tickets. So again, it'll be a very good relationship with the city and the county. Just a piece, about ninety percent of all smokers started as teen smokers, and I think that's really what this is driven about. I spoke about it earlier. The more eyes that we have on the problem, the better off this will be, and as the mayor indicated to us at committee meeting a few weeks ago, these are all nuisance calls that he's receiving from the police department regarding these businesses. I just feel it's an important piece of legislation, and we're glad that we supported it. Regarding the water meters and the laterals, we're certainly going to have a lot of discussion on that. But again, Peggy King has indicated, we, President King, we're going to actually take a look at that administrative code, chapter two fifty-five with water, because what we voted on today was just basically allowing the city to purchase the water meters for businesses. But as we read through this code here, it is very old and antiquated. There's some bathing, they're talking about establishing water meters in bathing establishments, breweries, livery, and boarding stables, pump houses, railroast stations. So it's very, very old, and that is when we had spoke to the Commissioner and to Engineer, where we'd certainly entertained the options of looking at the water and sewer laterals and just what interest, if any, we might want to move forward on that. And again, at committee, we had questioned the Commissioner about pricing, cost. He wasn't able to give us any of those numbers. And again, we have to be sure of how we move forward on this. I understand we did purchase the backhoe this year through some capital funds, but it's important that we, as council members and as our residents, know what the possibility of the cost will be that they're going to entail. And again, as Mr. Riggi indicated, this is only up to the house, or to the curb cock, you still have to go from there into the house and certainly hire a plumber. Talking about spring, again, thank you to the Mount Pleasant Neighbor Association. It was wonderful. We had some great partners there. Fifteen Love Tennis was there, one of our good organizations. And believe it or not, I'm assuming they're hoping for good weather because free tennis lessons are starting this Saturday from nine to eleven with Fifteen Love. And of course, they have a great website. It's www.fifteen, the number one five, fifteenloved.org. So please check out their websites, their free lessons, and of course, they do the lessons throughout the city, throughout the entire summer. Another piece for summer youth employment is absolutely, it's on the website right now for Schenectady County. So please, it's open to youth residing in Schenectady County, anybody from the ages of fourteen to twenty years old. The applications are online only, and it's at, again, www.schenectadycounty.com, and do the slash, look for Summer Jobs. The applications are online. It's through a lottery system this year, so it doesn't matter when you get this application in, you can only submit one application. And again, the numbers will be drawn for the lotteries for the positions. As of right now, we've got about, funding, I believe, for about two-hundred-twenty-five positions throughout the entire county. We are actually working with the Chamber, the Schenectady Chamber of Commerce right now, to do a buy-one-get-one-free summer youth employment program, where we're asking businesses to donate a thousand dollars, and that thousand will get you actually two youth to work for you. The county will take up the entire worker's comp, we will hire them, they will screen them, we'll have job coaches and supervision. So again, we're trying to really involve our businesses. Chuck Steiner and Sue Rank have been working with us closely, as has Jen Bargui with SJTA, so we're really looking to enhance that program this summer. So again, the website, www.schenectadycounty.com. Neighbor Association meetings, there's a couple of them that are still out here, too. The Tri-Neighbor Association, which is one-two-three-zero-nine Eastern Avenue and Central State, are actually meeting tomorrow night at six-thirty over at the Ellis Auditorium, McCollum Street Campus. And the Goose Hill folks are meeting Thursday, seven o'clock, at the Everlasting Life Church. Angelica Morris, who is the Executive Director of the Human Rights Commission, she will be the speaker, not Mr. Erickson, as the paper had mistakenly written down for us a few weeks ago, or last week, actually. So again, that's Thursday, seven o'clock, the Goose Hill Neighbor Association. And finally, just a couple of congratulations with sports. If you guys caught it, Union College Hockey Team was ranked number one in the entire country today, so a big special thank you to them, and hopefully down the road, we can do a special resolution honoring that team before they all leave to go home. And wouldn't that be great to have some national championship? But it's the first time ever in the history of Union College Hockey they've been rated number one in the entire country. And even though they're not here in our city, but again, hats off to the Scotia Glenville Boys High School Team, a great undefeated season that they had. Now, they are New York State Champions, but they're Federation Champions, and congratulations go out to all our youth. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Madam President, thank you. Just want to compliment, the individuals came down tonight with Women's History Month, women's equality and equity issues, and those individuals who've helped so much with crime victims, Pat Joya, Doris Aiken, Tina Mizuko, they've spent a lot of time, really makes such a tremendous difference in people's lives by bringing their compassion and stability when people go through just horrendous events. And the traffic issue at Brandywine in Albany, again, we've become more aggressive with Chief Cullen in terms of data-driven policing, where we put police officers where the problems are. And we're always looking at that data to become more sophisticated with it. And again, the tragic accident there, that we will review that and see if there are things that we should do differently or approach it in a different way to minimize the potential for those type of events. On April ninth and April tenth, following up on last year's very successful Realtors' Day, we're having a summit meeting here in Schenectady. It's labeled Strengthening Cities, Communities in Homes. Working not only the City of Schenectady, but five other regional mayors are participating in it. We have New York State We have New York State Department of Housing, Community Renewal, U.S. Department of Housing, Urban Development will have representatives here, Realtors will be here, bankers. Again, to do some educational training for people and talk about homeownership opportunities that exist within the city of Schenectady and within communities in the capital district. So it should be an exciting time, and hopefully we'll get some of the members of the council to sign up for that. And again, Kathy Lewis, the President of the School Board, reminded tomorrow is that bonding issue. It's very important, and so hope people would just take a few minutes, go out and vote tomorrow. Polls are open from noon until 9:00, and the way it's been structured, it really minimizes, almost zeros the impact on the local taxpayer, and leverages state and other dollars to do many of the needed improvements that will just improve the overall quality and educational environment within the city school district. So, thank you, Madam President.
Okay. If there's no other business to come before city council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kocozier, second to Mr. Erickson, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.